Good evening, everybody. We'd like to welcome you to this Zoom Candidates Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platte Counties and the South Kansas City Alliance. I'm Sandy Eads, I live in Kansas City, and I'm the President of the League of Women Voters. Tonight, I'll be moderating the forum. This year, 2021, the League begins its second century empowering voters and defending democracy. League is organized at local, state, and national levels, and our membership is open to all people of voting age, including men since 1974. There are over 700 member leagues, representing 500,000 members and active supporters, serving millions of voters in every election cycle. We're a nonpartisan organization, and we do not endorse candidates. However, the League has always been issue-oriented and advocates at all levels of government for our positions on these issues. We do this only after careful study and with consensus of our members. League is well-known for voter services activities, taking part in voter registration, as well as candidate debates and forums like this one, while bringing focus to the issues. Our popular site, vote411.org, will give you information about your particular ballot in every election. Look it up this March 17th, when it goes live for the April 6th election. In addition to this Zoom event, we are also live streaming this webinar on Facebook. Thank you for joining us, and thanks to the candidates for being responsive to voters. We welcome and appreciate the participation of these candidates. To minimize distraction, we'll turn off viewers' audio and video so we can concentrate on the candidates. For the Hickman Mills C-1 School District for Directors, serving a three-year term. Rachel Thompson is our timer, and she'll manage the countdown clock. Candidates have 90 seconds for each question, and we'll take a two-minute closing statement at the end. I think you all know, if you hear a little bell ringing, it means you're getting over your allotted time, and we want to keep to that so that we get to as many questions tonight as possible. We've already determined the order of candidate responses, and we'll use that to make sure that people are randomly assigned the question order as we go through them. So, number one is number one, it turns out, tonight, and that's Clifford Reagan. Is Mr. Reagan on? Has he shown up? Rachel, I'm not sure if I know that.
It looks like he hasn't been able to join yet.
All right, well, we'll take number one out of the mix then for the moment. So, at present, we have Ron Pearson, Ebony Osby, Ann Coleman, and Carol Graves. So, we'll go to Carol then for the first question. And the first question is, why do you want to be a member of the Hickman Mills School Board, which you already are, and how are you qualified?
Well, again, yeah, I have been a member for six years. I am, I've been a classroom teacher for 20-plus years. I have a basic understanding, as it relates to how kids learn and some of the issues that kids have today that they didn't have 20 years ago. So, I think I can bring that experience and that knowledge, not to take over, but just to add to our leadership team, so that our kids can learn in a way that they can be productive.
Thank you. Okay, that, the next question goes to Ron Pearson. Same question. Why do, or, yes, why do you want to be a member of the Hickman Mills School Board, and how are you qualified?
Well, I'd like to be a member of the Hickman Mills School Board because I have a heart for people. I just recently graduated from Mid-American Nazarene University, and I have a degree in organizational leadership. I served 21 years in the United States Army, and last two years, I wrote and enforced policies for the Department of Defense. So, in terms of why would I want to do it, it would give me an opportunity to give something back. I've been blessed and fortunate enough to have a good life. I retired about 12 years ago. I currently contract, and I provide health education in the Hickman Mills District. I teach people lifesaving skills, as well as medication administration and other medically-related courses. So, I feel like I can bring some good change to the district.
Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Didn't need to control. Thank you. The next question, the same question then goes to Ebony Osby.
I apologize in advance, I'm in the middle of being a mom, so I'm at Danks. So, I apologize for that in advance, I'm in my car. However, like I said, my name is Ebony Osby, and I want to be a part of the Hickman Mills C-1 School District's Board of, School Board, because I have a passion for children. I'm currently a behaviorist at elementary school. I have experience in elementary setting. I also have a passion for helping specifically those with special needs. I was a prior support coordinator for Developmental Jackson, Developmental Disabilities for the Jackson County. More importantly, I have three children that are in the Hickman Mills School District right now. Hickman Mills has so much potential, I want to see it become its potential, not only for my kids, but for other people's kids as well, and so, that's it.
Thank you very much. Ann Coleman, same question. And I'm happy to repeat these if I need to.
Hello?
Hello?
I'm not seeing my, oh, there I am. Okay, my name is Ann Coleman, and my family and I have lived in this Hickman Mills area for 28 years. I have a passion for education. I have a bachelor's and a master's degree in elementary education and special education from Alvin University. Over the years, I've had various family members that have sent their children to the Hickman Mills School District. Currently, I have a grandson and a nephew enrolled in the district. So, I have a vested interest in this area. I've lived here for 28 years, and I think I have a lot to offer the, you know, by being on the board, and I would very much appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Second question, we'll start with...
Sandy, sorry to interrupt. I believe Mr. Reagan has just joined us.
Wonderful. Mr. Reagan, are you on screen?
Yes, sir. Can you see me?
Yes, sir. Great. Terrific. All right, well, you're not that far behind. Let's go back to question number one. And question number one for you is this, why do you want to be a member of Hickman Mills School Board, and how are you qualified?
Well, first of all, let me start off with, I apologize to everyone, I was having technical difficulties today. The reasoning for me to, that I would like to become a member of the Hickman Mills School Board is because, first of all, I have the best interest for our children in hand. At this present time, I have had four children that have been with the Hickman Mills School District. Two of them have, well, one is graduating this year, and one has already graduated. Before I have joined, I have been on the Board of Education for the last three years, in which I had served as Director and also a Vice President of the Hickman Mills School District Board. I'm also involved in certain things at the, like hardesters, booster club, PTAs. I even was also over the PTA as the President of the Hickman Mills Councils of PTAs before it had been discontinued. And reason why I'm qualified is because of, like I stated, I have the best interest not only for the students, the teachers, but also the community in which I live here for.
Thank you very much. We'll start with Ron Pearson for the second question, and that is, what do you see as the biggest problems facing the school district? Do you have ideas on what should be done to resolve these issues?
I would say some of the biggest issues that are facing the Hickman Mills School District, one, top liner, headliner, would be the partial accreditation. Two would be actually returning back to school safely. That's something that I know is being worked on now in terms of the Return to Learn Program. And then, if we look at the 60% of the transitional housing, which actually affects us being able to keep students in the seats. If we don't have students in the seats, then we lose the funding. So, I think a combination of these three things. And if I bring them all to the forefront, I would say the accreditation. And then, I would also say that coming back to school safely from the pandemic, making sure that teachers are able to get inoculated, and that we have safe returning procedures. And finally, again, just making sure that we can secure and ensure enrollment stays up. Every time we lose students, we lose funding, and it's critically important for us to make our school competitive, so we can have people want to come and be a part of the Hickman Mills School District.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Reagan, we'll go back to you based on our random orders here for this second question. What do you see as the biggest problem facing the school district, and what are your ideas to resolve these issues?
Thank you. One of the things I see is student and parent involvement, and what I mean by that is, for long length of time, the Hickman Mills School District has no identity, meaning spirit. When you have student and parent involvement, you bring back student spirit, and that's something like we all know, what needs to be dead, what's dead needs to be buried. And those are some, one of the things. Also, we look at accreditation, and what the accreditation is, and I challenge the Board, and I challenge any Board, instead of all of us looking at what we can do, we need to charge the state. We know that the state always wants to take over school districts, but why we as a school district don't say as a Board of Education, hey, look, you see that we have these problems? What can we do so that therefore, or how can you help us instead of taking over our schools? How can you help us and give us the tools that we need to get the points that you would want us to have, so that therefore, we can be just like the regular schools in our districts? And also, when I think of, the last thing is, I said, it's parent and student, and I looked at also the student having qualified teachers, meaning when you, when you think about the qualification of teachers, you got to think of income. We need more income around here, and that means we have to charge our council people to get more developments, so that therefore, we can have more tips, so that therefore, we can pay our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Osby, it's over to you. What do you see as the biggest problems, and what are your...
Alrighty, one of the biggest problems that I think that the Hickman Mills School District has right now is accreditation, being partially accredited. I feel like that is the umbrella to a couple of issues, one, being parent involvement. I feel like the parents in the district do not take the district serious because it's not fully accredited. I feel like it's, they use it as a placement holder for their kids, like here, my kids are going to go to school here until I find a better school district. So, I feel like once they are fully accredited, parent involvement will, can increase parent involvement, parents will take the school district serious. Another thing is, teacher salary is up under that umbrella as well. I feel like, same with teachers, I feel like they don't, they do the bare minimum, because they're paid the bare minimum. And I feel like once we can increase their salary and get more qualified teachers within the school district, that our students' achievement will boost, and that would help as well.
Thank you. Ms. Graves?
Okay, I kind of echo many of the things that the candidates have said, but I have a couple of others that have not been mentioned. And again, of course, we, everyone knows accreditation is important, but I think another thing that is important at Hickman Mills is the culture. You know, we have got to change the culture of our school, and what that means is this, we know that we are one of the lowest-paying districts, but we all have had jobs that didn't pay a lot of money, but we enjoyed them, because the environment was positive, our voices were heard, we were embraced. And I think one of the things that we need to work on is changing the culture. I think our teachers need to know that we appreciate them, and that we are working behind the scenes to do whatever we can to give them the money that they deserve, because I'm a teacher as well, so I get it. But I think that you can create an environment where teachers want to come to school, and they want to teach the kids, and they're excited about it, and once they become excited, the kids are excited. And then, the parents are like, why, why is Johnny so excited about school? And it just kind of carries on. So, I think accreditation, of course, absolutely, but I think the culture of our school and focusing in on how can we pay teachers more, how can we attract them, and how can we keep them? So, those are the things that I feel are important. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Ms. Coleman?
There we go. I'm kind of reiterating what the other potential Board members have said. Full accreditation is a must for the Hickman Mills School District, because I feel that we will attract more students, parents will be more readily to enroll their children in our district if it's fully accredited. Another one, I think, most, a lot of our students have fallen behind because of the virtual education that they've had to get since, because of COVID. I know my grandchildren have, and I, so I think we need to have some fierce tutoring offered to the students. We need to get the parents on board with that. I just, I just feel that we need that for our students. And another one is salaries for teachers. We need to have a competitive salary to attract teachers, and also to attract teachers that are going to be committed and stay. I think our children suffer when we have teachers that come in and stay a year or two, and then they're gone, and then somebody else has taken their place. So, I think a competitive salary that will attract and keep committed teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here, for question three, we're going to go back to Ms. Graves. Question three follows right up this topic about accreditation. In terms of the pursuit by the district to gain full accreditation, how do you propose to govern differently to ensure that the district can meet this mark without state-sanctioned consequences or a state takeover?
Well, I, you know, I think there's several things that we need to do. One of them is, we need to look at the data. We need to see what areas that our scholars are falling short in, is reading and math, I mean, what is? And then, we need to intentionally pinpoint those areas where teachers need to work on that. Reading, to me, is a big thing. By the third grade, if you have not mastered those reading skills, then you're going to have problems when you get in the fourth, from the fourth grade up. And I think that when our students get to the third grade and they have not mastered basic reading skills, I think we need to either not necessarily reteach, but make sure that they go to summer school, or make sure that there are some, some things in place to help them. So, I think identifying what are the areas that we fall short in? What, what, what do we fall in short in? Okay, it's sciences and math, what, so you have to identify that. And then, after that, you have to figure out what approaches are you going to use? What educational strategies are you going to use to engage the students in academic success? So, identify and look at the data.
Thank you.
Both of them.
Ms. Coleman, over to you on that one.
Well, I kind of agree with Ms. Graves, being an educator, and I know from the past, looking at the data, you have to follow the data, the teachers have to be on point with the data, you have to follow the data, and then you can pinpoint exactly where the students are falling short and zero in on that. And I think if we emphasize more on reading, that because if the children aren't getting their reading, they fall short in history, they fall short in social studies, they fall short in everything, and I think we need to concentrate more on reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Pearson.
I firmly believe that we need to take a robust approach. We need to use creativity and innovation, and in that approach, we would use what I call a PIP. It's a Performance Improvement Plan. So, you strategically look at ways to implement, plan, and develop processes and procedures. So, again, with some of my colleagues have said, you want to look at the data? The data identifies where the areas are that performance is necessary, but it is critically important for us to even have external sources, because inwardly, we've seen this same thing for over a period of more than 12 years. This has been something that has been echoed. So, it takes an out-of-the-box thinker, it takes a new approach, a new method, and looking at it from, from the standpoint of what I say is a PIP, Performance Improvement Plan, strategically implementing, planning processes, and developing procedures to get us across the boards of full accreditation.
Thank you. Mr. Reagan, same question.
Would you say the question again?
Yes, in terms of the pursuit by the district to gain a full accreditation, how would you propose to govern differently to ensure that the district can meet this mark without state-sanctioned consequence or a state takeover?
Well, as serving on the Board, as I said, in the last, the past three years, as I did, looking at the data, right now, the Hickman Mills School District is on the floor, and what that means on the floor is, we're ready for takeover. We're low in all of our subject matters, and what that would have to do is, the best way to approach this is all hands is on deck now. We need to not only charge teachers, but we also have to charge our parents and our students. I mentioned when I was on the Board before, working with seven, we might need to bring back night school, we might need to bring back those tutoring. We, we might have to just not only teach our children, we might need to help some of us that might be lacking, because this new math, I'm not going to even lie, it's new different ways of way the children are being taught. They're not being taught the same way. Right now, reading, writing, and arithmetic in the Hickman Mills District is very low. So, we're talking to the rest of the seven, we need to think of some more programs, bringing them in, all hands on deck. That, that's from the teacher to the parent, to our counselors. Counselors, when they see that they're going low, keep bugging those parents like we used to do when we was going to school. Hey, look, such and such is on this level, how can we assist you? What do we need to do? Making all those resources available to our parents, and making sure that the students feel safe, would come in and ask them for that, and getting the help that they need.
Thank you. Ms. Osby, you can wrap up this question.
Alrighty then. So, I do believe that, I agree with Ms. Graves, we do need to look at the data to figure out what areas we lag in, what areas need to be improved, which is probably all areas. Looking at the data would be the first step, and I think, secondly, you're going to, it's going to have to be collaboration with teachers, because this is going to fall into their laps. Let's collaborate with the teachers, let's hear their voices on what they think needs to be heard. Let's figure out what has worked in the past, what has not worked in the past, to figure out how to get these babies on the right path, how to get the school district accredited. But I also think this needs to be done in a fashion that doesn't overwhelm the students or the teachers, because it does fall into the teachers' laps, and teachers already do a lot, and so, we don't want to overwhelm them, because we just don't want to overwhelm them, and we don't want to overwhelm the students either with homework, extra credit assignments, we don't want to overwhelm them with tests. So, I think that collaborating with the teachers, figuring out how to do this without overwhelming all of the parties that are involved, that is what would help us be accredited without state taking over. Because once state takes over, that, the stuff becomes mandatory, then we no longer, teachers, the district no longer has a say-so then. We are forced to do what they want us to do at that point, so I think that's what needs to happen. Thanks.
Sandy, you muted yourself.
There was a dog going to be involved here in a minute. Okay, Ms. Coleman, the next question is for you. The school board voted in 2019 to close two elementary schools because of declining enrollment and the desire to increase the district fund balance. What is your position on the prospect of closing more schools? Ms. Coleman?
I can't get my video back. Well, there goes the video. Okay, I, I am opposed to the district closing schools, if at all possible. Number one, the buildings are sitting up, unless we could possibly sell them or rent them out or something. I'm against the district closing schools. I think when you do that, then you're pushing those students into other schools, potentially overcrowding the classrooms. That's not good, that's not good for the teachers, that's not good for the students either.
Let's move to Ms. Graves, same question.
Some kind of way, I knew that you were going to call on me. Well, let, let me share this with you, and Ms. Coleman didn't bring this up. We worked at a school, I worked at a school for 11 years, and they closed in Kansas City, Missouri, and it was devastating. It was very devastating, because we had become a family. And so, whenever you close schools, even when you have to close, you know, you have to realize that you're tearing apart teachers who have worked together, students, on students into another school, but it was something that the district, you know, had to do, but it's never a pleasant experience, and no one is ever happy, but, you know, because of the low enrollment and so forth, this is what we had to do. But, again, it's, it's not, it's not an experience that, that we want to have or continue to have, but it happened, and so, we've, we had to move on, we had to make some changes, and that's what happens in education and in life. Like I said, I've had the experience of having, having a school closed, it was very sad on the staff and the kids, went to another school, we weren't really treated right, and, you know, we had to get adjusted to that, so. And then, as a Board member, having to close schools, it's, it's never easy, it doesn't matter what side you're on, it's just, it's never an easy thing. Sometimes you have to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Reagan, your view on that topic?
Well, I said on the Board at the time when we was getting ready to close those schools, and at the time, the proposition was three, some wanted to do four. My opposition on that is, I never would like to close schools. What I would rather do is, sometimes when you're in a district like ours, you need to start looking up at the top. And what I mean, sometimes you might have to make some cuts up at the top, so that therefore, it could be more convenient for what you are faced with. If you have 500 people and you got all these principals, you have all these higher-up people that you really don't need for the, all the capacity that your schools are holding, let's start at the top before we start closing our schools first. Let's look at everything and make sure that we covered everything before we looked at our schools and say, oh, we're just going to close this school, we haven't looked. There were some things that were done during this pandemic that, you know, to me, as a district, why would you hire people when you're not even in school? You know, that to me is, looking at money you could have saved, you don't need them because we're not there. So, basically, as the Board, they're overseer, they're like a deacon of the church, they're the overseer, they're watching, they're waiting, they're looking, they're making sure everything is in order. But if your house is not in order at, with your Board, then all that ripple effects go all the way down. So, I am against it, I would start at the top and work with the other stuff.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, your view on school closings?
As uncomfortable as it is, whenever it's a necessity, then it's one of those uncomfortable things that may need to be done. Now, while I don't advocate for it, because I understand that the history could be a part of it, and that it makes it easier, because it's a part of your community, but I tend to look at it... But I tend to look at it a little differently. If you take those buildings and maybe turn them into other educational opportunities, such as maybe it's a trade school, maybe they become community centers. Maybe we take that infrastructure and we form alliances with other businesses and we rebuild our blighted community. When we say closing of a school, yeah, that might be a necessary. It might be a necessity. Because the reality is, is when we have a 60% transient rate and we have no students that are filling those seats, then we are paying for something that we cannot afford. So I still, I still stand on saying, I'm not, I, I am totally not foreclosing schools. But when it is necessary, we have to take the critical steps so that we can rebuild our Hickman Mills community as well as the school district.
Thank you. Ms. Uh, Ms. Osby, your view?
Sorry, I got my special light here in the car. All right. So, um, I, um, I, I straddled the fence with this one. However, I believe that I oppose to closing schools, especially going forward. Um, and I say that because I actually was, that actually affected me. My daughter actually attended one of those schools that was closed. Um, so we are, we were able to be resilient and move forward with, um, the new school that we had to attend. But that did affect me personally. Um, however, when I moved, um, to Kansas City, I came from Texas. I always thought that, um, the Kansas City area was just overpopulated with schools. I didn't understand why there were schools on every single corner. Um, and so I also get that it, it is a necessity sometimes that schools close. It is very unfortunate, but it is a necessity. So I do get that. Um, like I said, going forward, I am opposed to schools closing. I agree with Mr. Reagan. I think there are other avenues, other resources that we can move around um, in order to make, um, the financial needs that we need to do. Um, I think we could try to beef up enrollment. Um, I've seen kindergarten rallies. I have been in Hickman Mills School District for approximately 10 years. I don't know of any kindergarten rallies or anywhere where we're out here on these streets trying to get, um, kids in those seats. So like, I think there's, there are just other avenues where we can do other than closing a school. I also agree with Ron. If a school does become closed, what are we doing with that building that can actually benefit the school district? There are no YMCA's in the Hickman Mills School area. There are no big community centers besides Hillcrest. Um, we can turn those buildings into something positive, um, for the kids as well.
Stay right there because you're up next.
Alrighty.
This question is, do you have any thoughts on what the school board and school district should do to help students catch up after a year of virtual schooling that may have left them behind?
Alrighty, I think, um, number one, that becomes parent involvement. Um, but as a, as a mother, virtual learning is hard. So, um, just, um, like somebody stated earlier, they don't teach kids the same way that they, um, taught us. Um, and I, I, I learned that firsthand. I asked, had to tell my teacher, uh, my, my daughter, wait, I need to watch a video on how to teach you this fractions. So, um, because it's just different. They teach different than they taught us. So I think we need to get parent involvement. When we have parent involvement, um, that can help kids catch up as well. Um, teaching our parents how to teach their kids. Um, also tutoring is a way to, um, help, um, catch up with, um, help catch up, uh, due to the virtual learning situation. And just kind of be a patient, really. It really is patience. These kids will get it. Kids are resilient. Um, I have, like I said, I have two kindergartners. I had to end up, parent involvement is strong. I'm really strong on that. I end up teaching my precares how to write their name, you know, so that they weren't lagging. Um, equipped in our parents with the materials to help them. A lot of, I've heard so many parents, I helped so many friends that are like, I'm not a teacher. I can't do this. Um, instill it in our parents, you can do this. This is your kid. Let me show you what to do. Um, here, be, making teachers available, um, or making help available for the parents. Like I said, you can come between these hours and you can, you can get these tutor, a tutor can help your kid, or we can help you so that you know how to help. Um, so again, wrap it all up. I just think parent involvement is really strong in catching these kiddos up because I'm a parent and I understand.
Thank you very much. Ms. Coleman, the unique, uh, situation we have this year on catching students up.
Yeah, so as I stated before, I think, uh, special, special tutoring for the students would enhance that. I'm a big proponent of helping parents help their students. When I worked at a schooling, the Kansas City District, uh, I was in charge of a program after school that involved the parents. They came once a week after school and we, um, trying to get my picture on. We, um, had books and supplies for them. We modeled how to, how that they could help their student, how to teach them with the supplies that we gave them. And I must admit, when it first started out, it was very slow. We had maybe three to five parents a night. But then those parents, uh, said to other parents, you know, this program is helping. This program is helping me help my student. And before we knew it, we had a whole cafeteria full of parents and students. And I think that it helped also, that old saying, if you feed them, they will come. And we had like a meal prepared for them after everything was all over. So I think those are just a few of the ways that we can, we can help.
Ms. Graves.
I, I think it's a real challenge. We, we've been, we've been virtual since March, okay, last March. And so I teach fifth grade. And so my fifth graders who were fourth graders last year did not learn fractions, you know, like you only do in the fourth grade. And so you, you're, you're playing catch up, okay? And so basically what I do is I give quizzes on things that they should have known, should have had last year, just to see how they're doing and what, what problems they're missing and that, you know, that, that type of thing. It, it, it's a real challenge, you know? It, it really is. And, you know, I, 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 I know people talk about parent involvement, but, um, realistically, how many of our parents are really involved with their kids? You know, I mean, they say, well, you're the teacher. You know, you're the teacher. And so I, I wish I could say that the parent, of course, parent involvement would help. But how many of our parents really want to get involved with our kids? You know, that, that's the issue. So trying to turn that around is a real challenge. Being out of school for a year, the virtual, uh, which is not the best tool, but what, what can we do? So, you know, I just think you, you, we spend a lot of time and we just have to keep trying to catch up. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Reagan.
Thank you all. As I said before, all hands on deck. And what I, I mean about that is now it's accountability time. Uh, all parents have had a chance to see what the, uh, teachers go through each and every day, along with the school, of how their, uh, their student acts each and every day. Sometimes now, maybe the behavior will go down now. Uh, parent involvement is still gonna be, uh, the number one. I have, uh, two students, as I stated, in the Hickman Mills School District. And then I have nieces and nephews also in this district. The main thing is tutoring. Uh, I, I believe you're gonna have to tutor these kids because they have lost a lot of those skills for this whole year since they've been out of school. And, and, and also with that, uh, we also might have to bring in, uh, as Mrs. Coleman said, you know, we might have to bring in the, uh, parents to, also to get a grip on everything also. But also, we might need to test the student to see how much the student has lacked. And therefore, that'll give the school itself, uh, enough to see how this student is doing. Counselors gotta follow back up and say, hey, look, we took this test when we, this entry test because we had a test to bring everybody back. We see where everybody is sitting. Now we give it to the, uh, the parent. We document, make sure we document. Because without documentation, nothing is gonna help us move the bar. So we have to document and do our job together as a board, as a district, and as parents.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pearson, how do we, uh, get back and, uh, catch up?
Getting back and catching up, I believe one approach would be to look at it from a robust standpoint. I believe we can use community involvement and create programs. We focus on the parents. However, the parents are working and I don't want to out them. They are definitely a force multiplier. But I'd like to even focus on the grandparents. I myself am a grandparent. My grandchild attends Freedom Arkley, and I've been a watchdog. Um, and I do believe that if we look at the community, not only the parents, not only the grandparents, but as well as the community members, and we use them as force multipliers, we take some of the load off of those teachers. Um, in addition to that, we may use short, small programs like pods. Pods were created when you had teachers who may have, uh, retired. They set up little pods in different communities and they were able to meet some of those needs. What if we took that and we modeled that and we put that across our district? These are some creative and innovative ways that we may use to bring back some of the, to, to catch up with some of, um, the areas that we've lost during this technology piece. And I believe if we all focus our energies on making sure that the children are in the place that they need to be academically, and we do it as a community, I think we'll get the best bang for our buck.
Okay, you get to, uh, you get to keep going here. Uh, this question is a little bit current. What do you know about House Bill 543, tentatively approved yesterday by the Missouri House? It would let students who live in Hickman Mills transfer to neighboring school districts.
Now, to be perfectly honest, I hadn't heard of Bill 543. I'm very familiar with Senate Bill 55. So if this one just came up, I knew that 55 also had some remnants of this. So I'm, so I'm, I'm wondering, is this just another proponent, another component of Senate Bill 55? I can't speak to the vouchers that allow these children to go to the other school districts. And what I would say about that is when we talk about school choice, there's a different, depending on how you look at it, school choice, when you look at the wealthy, the wealthy don't put a lot of their children in our district. Their children go to private schools and they go to schools where they know that they have the opportunity to have an edge. So when we talk about vouchers, we have to look at what the vouchers do, what the impact is. When these vouchers allow students to go to these other schools, what it does is it takes funding from our district. And if that is what 543 is proposing, then we have to take a hard look at the accountability. So if that money is taking monies from the Hickman Mills School District, then I would definitely not be a proponent of that bill. But again, I, since you said it just passed yesterday or it just came up yesterday, I'm just not privy to that information.
Okay. Ms. Osby, same, same issue and let, uh, without necessarily the bill, uh, number itself, this idea of, of having the ability to transfer kids out of Hickman Mills to neighboring districts.
I, um, would be opposed to the idea of, um, the bill allowing, um, children to be transferred to other districts, um, out of the Hickman Mills School District. Because it, I mean, it just simply takes away revenue. It takes away enrollment. It takes, it takes away from the Hickman Mills School District. It does not add anything, um, it doesn't add any value. It's detrimental to our district. We are struggling already, um, you know, for enrollment. We are struggling already, um, in the revenue area. So, um, if something like that was to happen, um, it doesn't, it doesn't do Hickman Mills School District any good. Um, it actually just takes away from the district.
Okay, Ms. Graves, your thoughts?
Okay, why do I always know I'm next? I know a little bit about that. Um, I think that it would be very detrimental because this is what would happen. The, the best and the brightest will leave Hickman Mills to go to Center or go to Grandview. And so what you would have would just be those that are just there, you know? So, so we have to have, you know, we, we have to have students on all levels. So if you just take all your, your best and brightest and they move, then what motivation would you have for the other students? So I think we very, very detrimental to our district for them to, to go to another neighboring district like Grandview or Center, which both of them are very close proximity. So I, I think we're very detrimental. I don't know, uh, if it's definite. I know it has to go to the Senate. So I'm not sure how it's gonna go. So, you know, we gotta be careful. We are, we, we, you know, we gotta be looking on, on the Missouri House website, see what is going on in elementary and secondary education. Because they're doing all kinds of things down in Jefferson City, and we don't know about it until it's done, you know? So that's my take on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reagan.
Yes, sir. Um, with the choice schools and with the bill, it would be, as Mrs. Graves echoed and, uh, the rest of the colleagues on here have echoed. A little bit, as I stated, and I said it earlier, um, Hickman Mills School District, we tried to talk about choices, which school you want to go to. You could go to this school, you could go to that school. Uh, make a long story short, I was against that then. I believe that you should teach everything at all schools. You shouldn't have something here, something there. If we teach everything, everybody's gonna get the same. Now, if we have a, 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 a place where our scholars who, uh, achieve a little bit more can go, send them to that gifted and talented school in one of those abandoned buildings that we do have. But as of right now, it would be very detrimental, uh, this bill, if we do not, uh, do something about it. But as a Board of Education, we have lobbyists, we have all these people. Charge the state too. The state wants to take over. What is it, what is our job to say, hey, look, we have lobbyists down here supposed to be lobbying for us? Why can't we ask the state, as I stated earlier? Give us the tools and resources to help us get up to standard. Then nobody goes anywhere. But you also have to have that school spirit. You got to bring back and make everything rejuvenated. So that teachers, students, parents, everybody, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Coleman, uh, let you finish up on this question.
I think this bill would be devastating to the district, and I am highly opposed to it. Um, I know it was introduced by, um, Mr. Pollitt of Sedalia. And it would allow our students to, like Ms. Graves said, to go to any other school district. And that money that's allotted for that student would go to that, would go with that student. So that would be devastating for us in it of itself. And then also, the districts that are receiving those students, they're not required to have buildings open up to accommodate these extra students. They're not required to hire staff to accommodate and teach these students. I think it would be just devastating. Also, I do know that groups like Missouri NEA, MSTA, the, uh, American Federation of Teachers have opposed this. They're all in opposition to this bill. And so what I would encourage anybody or everybody is to write your representatives and state your opposition to this before it moves any further.
Thank you. The next question is for Mr. Reagan. Do you think a longer in-person summer school would be beneficial?
I couldn't hear you. You kind of slurred out.
Well, uh, I'll repeat it. Do you think a longer in-person summer school would be beneficial?
I don't think a longer in-person, uh, summer school for our students would be, uh, would be helpful. And the reason why I say that, uh, we ask our students each and every day to do a lot of things, whether it's in the classroom. Just look forward to the summer. Uh, everybody needs a break. That's why we all work is to get a vacation. We work so that therefore we can have vacation in our banks so that we can take a vacation with our family, just like our students. Our students, they need a break also. Uh, we, they need a break when they, from home, they need also a break from school. Now, as parents, it's our job to keep equipping our children as they take these breaks each and every day. Maybe when we go on a vacation, we might go to somewhere like Mount Rushmore, teach them something in history. So every time you take a vacation, there is a teaching method that we can teach our, our kids each and every day. So I don't believe that, uh, a longer in-person summer school would be beneficial for our students here in the Hickman Mills School District.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Graves, your view on that?
Um, I do think that you can create, uh, a summer school that is not necessarily long, that has some academics, a little bit of, a, a, a little bit of academics, which would be reading and math, basic skills, and also some, some fun and play. I think because the students have been out for a year and the virtual learning has not really worked for most of our kids, okay? Because you have to be self-motivated. Cause you have to be self-motivated to, uh, you know, to, to really be successful, um, you know, with the virtual learning. So you can create and, uh, you can have a four-week program. And, you know, you could be in class from eight to twelve and then after that, we, we, we're doing recess or we're going on field trips, educational field trips. Um, our parents can't, uh, take their kids on vacation, you know? For various reasons, but yes, I do, because of what has gone on for the past year. I, I, I think if you can design one where you have your academics and you also have some recaping it. So, so it, it's both, um, beneficial in terms of academic success and also have fun. So kids like to have fun. They'll work hard if they know we're going swimming or going to the zoo or worlds of fun or wherever they go, I don't know, I'm old, so I don't know where they come. So yeah, I, I, I think you can make, you create it in the right way. You can be successful, but you gotta spend some time creating it, okay?
Thank you. Ms. Coleman, where do you come down on this?
I wholeheartedly agree. I think the students would welcome summer school just for a chance to be with their friends. I've talked to my grandkids, I've talked to several kids around my area and they are, they're bitten at the chops to get back and be with their friends. And I just think, like Ms. Gray said, if you couple it, I mean, it doesn't have to be long, four weeks or half days or whatever, but I think the children would welcome it. I know the parents would welcome it. But if you couple it along with field trips, like Ms. Gray said, swimming or going to the zoo or going to Union Station and seeing what they have there. But I, I think it's necessary and I think the kids would welcome it more than you think.
Thank you. Ms. Osby, how about you? What do you think about that?
Alrighty, um, so I'm actually, um, so I, um, can you repeat the question first? Sorry, I wanna make sure.
The question is, do you think a longer in-person summer school would be beneficial?
Okay, that's, um, I do not think a longer in-person summer school would be beneficial to these children. Um, I think it will cause burnout, um, to the children and the teachers. Um, I think although they have been, um, virtual, um, it's, they still been working. Um, and even if they have not even been participating in virtual, the, um, the expectation that they are supposed to be can cau- may have caused some parents, some students, um, anxiety that they, they know that they're supposed to be participating. So even though they aren't participating, the anxiety that they should be, you know, I feel like that is overwhelming as well. And so I do not believe that a longer summer school, I do believe that there should be some summer school, but not a longer summer school. Um, because it just creates burnout. Um, and then also, I believe in consistency. These kids are used to summers, they know how long the summer is, they're used to those months that they know are summer school months, they're used to those months that they know are, school, school months. And so if we take that away from them, um, we have created a unsis- uh, inconsistent, schedule that these kids are not used to. And so I just, I, I think we needed to stick to consistency for the kids, for the parents, um, and for teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, we'll let you wrap up on this topic.
Okay, so I, I do think that summer school will be beneficial. When we use longer, I think that's where the teeth come in. Um, as some of my colleagues have said, yes, uh, as long as if we say for instance, make some of the time shorter and we create, um, some emotional supports and maybe have some trips that are educational. We add value back into it. Uh, the other thing is, we probably haven't looked at the fact that they've been away, they've been separated. And some of the ways that we administer this summer school, we'll have to look at maybe hybrid methods. Some of it could still potentially be online and some of it in person. And I think that's good for reconnecting, but above all, we have to remember the reason why we're doing it. And the reason is because we are partially accredited. So if we have to work a little longer to get there, then I'm on board for it. But I want that same support from our community to make that happen. Instead of us coming up with all of this in a vacuum, let's talk to our community leaders, let's talk to our members. Maybe we can do it creatively enough that we can support them and put them back on task to create full accreditation. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is gonna roll over to you, the next one then. Uh, big, much different topic. Do you think the school district should have the power to veto or opt out of taxic- tax increment financing projects like Cerner? Do you support a lesser term for the agreement, for example, twelve years instead of twenty-three years of tax abatement benefits for future projects? So do you think you, uh, have the ability to opt out of a TIF project in your district?
You know, I, I really like that. Uh, I like the ability to opt out when it's better for the district. Uh, the point in case is when you talk about Cerner, it's a four hundred billion dollar industry that we entered into a six million dollar agreement. Six million dollars is gonna be exhausted in approximately five to six years. You have fifteen years of free rein of a business that's sitting in your district that's, that has no obligation to pay back out to the community. So I believe wholeheartedly that if we manage the expectations of these TIFs, not only TIFs, but the, the agreements for this tax incentive. I believe if we manage them effectively, we put back into the pot for our Hickman Mills community and we can grow economically.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Osby, same question.
Alrighty, so I made it home. So I, I do, um, I do agree that the, um, school district should have the option to opt out of, um, agreements such as that, um, simply because like, uh, Mr. Pearson said, um, what are, in such instance, we spoke of, of Cerner, uh, how is Cerner giving back, um, to the school district? How is Cerner, um, helping with the school district? I don't think that it shouldn't be an option, but I do think we should have the option to opt out if needed, if we wanted to, because, um, again, what's the gain? What are we gaining? Or it should be monitored closely. Um, cause I do believe one of the things that I think, um, Hickman Mills School District needs to do is to collaborate with, um, with, uh, different businesses and in such in that way. So, um, it's, it can be, um, a good thing, but I think it needs to be monitored. And I do think having the choice to opt out or to do so, um, instead of being forced would be, um, great.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman. So it goes over to Ms. Coleman. You're muted.
There we go. I was just talking, I'm sorry. I did say, I think we should be able to opt out of these TIF projects. What we really need to see is if it's really gonna benefit the school district, is it really gonna benefit the community? Will it help with blighted areas? Will it bring stores or other businesses to the community? Because when the community thrives, the school district thrives. And I think we need to, um, have something in place to make them stick to what they say. Because I know at Cerner over here, we looked up and they had that whole street blocked off over there. And I don't think that was originally in the project. So, and this is inconvenienced, it's inconvenienced my neighborhood, the neighborhood down, down the street, because that street was blocked off. So I think we really need to really see if, if it's gonna benefit the school district, if it's gonna benefit our community. So yes, we should be able to opt out of.
Thank you. And Ms. Graves, your view?
You know, I think that we need to, uh, definitely be in on the negotiations, uh, when we do a TIF. And with the, uh, Cerner, uh, you know, the school district was just like a box, but we weren't in. We didn't really have a lot to, lot to say on that. So I think you learn by your experiences, okay? And I think we've learned now that, you know, if a business wants to get a tip in our area, the Hickman Mills School District is gonna make sure they have a seat at the table. I do think we should be able to opt out, but even more so than that, I think we need to make sure that we are there negotiating, just as they're negotiating, okay? Cause Cerner took all of the banners from our, took the street out and, um, made many promises, uh, you know, to do some things for us. We don't have a restaurant here, a sit-down restaurant. So I, I just think, you know, being able to negotiate, what they want something and so do we. So, uh, I think being able to sit down and, and tell them, you know, this is what we want, we know what you want. You know, but this is what we want as well. So just good negotiation skills, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reagan, uh, your views on this?
Yes, sir, I think we should, uh, be able to opt and, uh, do what is best for the school district. But I, I'd like to go a little farther, uh, I had the pleasure of bringing in the new superintendent. And one of the things that I, uh, got a chance to do with the other seven was to sit down and after I did get off the board, I voted some other people to get to know you. And what I mean by that, if, uh, if I have a business or if I have something, let us collaborate to whereas maybe I can, uh, do something to help your students get here out in the jobs. It's kinda like doing a trade school, uh, you know, uh, whatever trade that you all have that our district could use. Maybe I could set our children up over there. Uh, with this Cerner TIFs and all these TIFs, uh, I, I believe that the, the, the school board should be there along with also our representatives. Uh, you know, a lot of times we, we hire, we, we elect these officials and we don't look at who we're electing. And then at the time that we elect them, that, you know, when it's time to do something, they're gone. Because Cerner, I've been in, in the room with them, they just blew a lot of hot smoke air. Basically, that's the basic way to say it. And, and that was very crucial to our district. But right now, uh, moving forward, uh, with the new superintendent that the school district does have, I see the partnerships that he is doing. I see the things that he's trying to do out there with getting involved, uh, with the community as well with the businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Graves, this is, uh, question is very similar. Do you know if Cerner is involved in supporting the school district and if so, how?
Well, they, they do support us. They, I mean, they gave us six million dollars over a period of time. So, um, they, they do support us in a way. Of course, we would like for more support from them. And, uh, but, um, we're certainly gonna take what they're giving us, so.
So it's just, it's just the monetary amount, read to original.
Yes.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Reagan, uh, your, your thoughts in that area? Anything to add?
Oh, well, as far as with Cerner, uh, yes, they given, uh, us some spare change. We've set up meetings when I was on the board in two thousand nineteen with them. Uh, they were talking about doing some other things. They were selling all parts of their land to, uh, try to give us, uh, 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 some money, but as we see and as everyone sees, uh, there's nothing. When you have that, uh, when you have a, 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 a time period to whereas you don't have to pay taxes to anybody and you're banking all your money, I don't have to worry about you, cause you giving me everything. It's kinda like we, we sho- we, we showed our hand before we asked for what we wanted. So just for future, I'm hoping, uh, that everyone, even the community that's on here today, before we allow anything to go up in this community, make sure, make sure that it's gonna benefit our students and our community of this, of this area. Stop allowing our, our officials and everybody else to do what they gonna do and then leave us when we need some help. That's the reason why we're here, where we at. But with the turnaround, I see it's coming. Uh, there is development coming, we got the Price Chopper, we have the internship with them. We have, uh, uh, another restaurant that is coming up there on Blue Ridge, I think it said Taco Bell, even though we got one right down the street uh, off here, off of, uh, oh, sex Red Bridge. So it's coming, but charge everybody and accountability.
Thank you. Ms. Osby.
Can you repeat the question, please?
I sure can. Uh, do you know if Cerner is involved in supporting the district and if so, how?
Okay, thank you. Um, I am not familiar with how much they are, um, supporting the district. So in my opinion, um, I do not think that they are supporting the district as much as they should be. Um, yes, the spare change they gave is great. But what, uh, what about, sorry, that spare change that they gave, um, I would like to know what, I don't feel like that has done a lot to help our kids. There, I feel like there's just so much more that they can do. Like Mr. Reagan said, they, the Price Chopper is great. Um, the development, there's a hotel coming down the street that they're doing. There is also, um, like he said, the Taco Bell, we have Taco Bell be here. What, how does a hotel benefit the school district? So in my opinion, I do not think that they are doing enough to support the school district. Maybe the area, the community, yes, but not the school district. So there is much more that they can be doing. And it does not always have to be financial, it could be, um, some of the workers, uh, like I said, more internship for our kids, more, some of the workers donating, volunteering time to our kids, our schools. It could be mentorship, it could be so much more tutoring. You could tutor a kindergarten, pre-care to read a book to them. Um, so I just think that there's so much more that they can be doing to support the Hickman Mills School District.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Coleman.
Here we go. I think that Cerner is supporting the school district, but it's my belief, is it all they can do? Could they do more? And I think they could. I'm sure the money was good, but, um, like Ms. Osby said, maybe, um, well, I do have friends, I have several friends that work over there. And they, and I asked them, would you support, um, being mentors to our students? Would you support being tutors in, to our students? And most of them said yes. So I think there's a little bit more that they can do, but I, I do think that they have helped. Uh, but I think that's not all they can do.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, we'll let you wrap up this one.
Okay. First, let's start with transparency, because the first question you ask is has Cerner given us money? And while I am a fan of business, let's, let's agree to do business. So I, when I say transparency, I wholeheartedly don't know. But with that being said, how would you find out? Where is that information kept? Who knows that? And as a member of the Board of Education, I would think that it would be critically important to reestablish our commitment. And so here's an example. You have to look at what happened with Dave Chappelle, maybe just, uh, about ninety days ago and his agreement with Netflix. Well, it wasn't a bad agreement, but Dave Chappelle renegotiated. So I do believe that we can renegotiate the deal that we've made and allow Cerner and other companies that wanna come in to be able to provide supports in terms of maybe community involvement in the term of a community center, maybe funding those initiatives, maybe putting things in place that we can have tutors, not just tutors from them, but they may fund the tutors. So when you ask, did we get the money? Ron doesn't know because there's not a level of transparency and that information was not privy to me. But I do believe that we should go back and renegotiate in a, in a nice way. Let's present it nicely so that we can both have some amicable, at, at least a measure of amicability.
Okay, this is gonna roll over to you, the next question. Uh, because Hickman Mills School District is still dealing with provisional status, it can be targeted for the opening of charter schools within the district. Do you know if any charter schools are planned?
I currently don't know if any charter schools are planned in the Hickman Mills area. But I do know that Senate Bill fifty-five proposes to open up other charter schools. That's what this money is gonna do. I do also know that St. Louis and Kansas City are the only cities that have charter schools. One thing that they have in common is these are the most blighted communities. Another thing that they have in common is not only are they blighted, but these populations are filled with black and brown students. Now, to get back to what your question was, I think that is critically important for us to take, to, to listen and to learn and to make maneuvers that allow us to renegotiate and reestablish a foothold economically.
Okay, Ms. Graves, same question.
Did you repeat it? I'm sorry.
Oh, not at all, no, no problem. Because Hickman Mills School District is still dealing with provisional status, it can be targeted for the opening of charter schools within the district. Do you know if any charter schools are planned?
Uh, you know, at this particular time, I, I, I don't know of any, but that doesn't mean that there are not some plans for that to happen, because, uh, we know that, um, many of the people in Jefferson City. many of the people in Jefferson City, you know, really want to see charter schools. Uh, so I hope that doesn't happen. Uh, but um, I don't know, it could. But at this particular time, I don't know of any, any building or any, any preparations uh, for a charter school in Hickman Mills. Just talk.
Uh, Ms. Coleman, how about you?
I have to be honest. I don't know. Um, I'm not familiar with that, but I don't know. I have not heard of any charter schools slighted or slated to be in our area. Um, I just don't know. I'm not in favor of it, but I just don't know.
Okay.
That would, you know, I would have to look into that more if I'm afforded the opportunity to be a school board member.
Thank you. Mr. Reagan, how about you?
Yes, sir. I'm back. Uh, there has been talk uh, before uh, this pandemic. Uh, we have had uh, talks about people trying to start up their own charter schools and getting backings from other big businesses. But uh, as I stated, as a board of education, you can stop all that by being a good steward. Uh, we all know that you're going to need buildings to condone stuff. To let it, you know, to come in. We have the buildings. We have what you want. We have, this is one thing that I've always said about the Hickman Mills School District. Their schools are on a lot of land. I mean, they're on a lot of land. And I don't know if people have done all the geography of, but they're on a lot of land. So we have a lot of things that people use. So therefore, what we need to do, uh, and this goes for everybody, teachers, students, parents and everybody, we need to all get together. Because as we know, they are not held by the same standards, first of all. So therefore, why would I want to send my child to a school district that I know that's not held by the same standards as the Missouri uh, Desi? So therefore, I would rather for them to be there in a school that I know where they're going to get all the tools that they are need, that they need. So basically what I'm saying is, we have to tighten up. Everybody out there, we need to tighten up. Students, parents, teachers, everybody tighten up. We won't even have to worry about this. This would be a thing of the past.
Thank you. Ms. Osby, your thoughts?
Um, I do not know that um, the Hickman Mills School District um, has any charter schools planned in the very near future. Um, I do know that there has been talk about charter schools um, on different bills, but I don't know that there are any um, coming in the near future. I would be opposed to them. Um, but I don't know.
Okay, let's see here. Um, we're going to move over to Mr. Reagan. Shifting the the topic a little bit, in what ways do you invite the public to hold you accountable after you've been elected to the board?
Well, as a board member, as I stated before, uh, this is funny because I'm glad that that came up. I was a parent and I was a board member. And one thing I told everybody is that when I'm a parent, you're going to know the difference between a parent and a board member. But all, everybody used to say, hey, hey, you don't need to do this and that. Well, look, I was a parent first. That's what we have to always remember. I was a parent first. Then as a board member, when I'm out there conducting business, am I, am I out there in a prison? Am I behind the four walls? Are you able to talk to me? Am I talking to the staff and the students? Most students now, they know me. They know Mr. Reagan because they see me in the buildings. A lot of people didn't want you to come, but as a, as a, as a, as a, as a board member, it's your job to go around and really pay attention to what is going on. Because at the end of the day, you're going to be held accountable for all these, this money that was spent in all these schools when you approved it. And then you didn't see what was going on until the ninth inning, and then you come back on here telling, well, it's me. So hold me accountable through my actions and what I do and my words and what I'm out there doing to help this district. It ain't about Mr. Reagan. It's about our district. Always keep that. It ain't about this title of board member. It's about our district. So lose the titles, be the person.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Coleman.
I think um, I wouldn't, I welcome being held accountable because that's my job. That's what I campaigning on. Uh, am I being an advocate for the students that you elected me to be their advocate for? Am I accessible to the students, to the teachers, to the staff, to the parents? I would go out and visit the students in the schools, chat with them, chat with the teachers. What can I do? What can I do to help you guys here? Talk with students, talk with teachers, talk with parents, be accessible. So in that way, I would be held accountable.
Thank you.
All right. So one way I would like for them to hold me accountable is basically staying true to my word. Uh, while I'm out canvassing and while I'm out um, trying to gain votes and things. Um, the things that I'm saying, which is such as I will advocate for the um, parents, the students and the teachers. Um, the things that I'm saying, like I will help gain accreditation, things that I gain in partnerships. Ask me those things once I'm elected. Ask me, um, what do you know about us getting accreditation? What do you know about us um, forming partnerships um, to make sure that I am maintaining my word? Um, that I didn't just say those things, things to get um, your votes, um, kind of question me. Um, uh, allow me to be transparent with you. Um, another thing is um, make sure I'm advocating. If someone tells me if if there's a parent I'm talking to and we so happen to have the same kids at the same school or something, or I'm knowledgeable about something that she's not and I'm, she's asking me questions and I'm telling her, oh, go out, go back and find it. Follow up, follow through, follow up with me. Hold me to my word, um, and so that I can continue to serve you, um, serve the parents, serve the community. Um, so basically a way for them to hold me accountable is just follow, follow through with your, with um, what you need me to do for you.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, what's accountability look like to you?
Accountability looks like being your word and understanding your position. You you see, being a board member, there's a fine line between operating in your area of responsibility and getting off into an area that could be detrimental to your position. While it is important for us to deliver our constituents, our community members' message, it is critically important, but we have to put it in the right path. As a board member, we have one employee. That employee is the superintendent. It is our job to support that superintendent as that superintendent spreads out his message and his agenda and his vision for the district. Now, in terms of accountability, if I'm asked a question, it's my job to have information to point that person in the right direction. And if they don't get the outcome that they're looking for, I'm open and we can read us, we can, we can always reapproach it. But to make that superintendent aware what's going on, because we don't want anybody to be blindsided. So in terms of accountability, you can hold me accountable to make sure that I'm in line with what you've elected me to do, to take your needs of the community and your students and make sure that we get them in the right area so they can be met.
Okay, Ms. Gray. Uh, yes, Ms. Graves.
I think holding a a person accountable, for the last six years, my motto has been putting kids first and I have not wavered. I think that uh, I I'm kind of echoing some of the things that Mr. Pearson said. I think as a board member, you do have to be careful. First of all, as a board member, you 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 have to read and you have to be knowledgeable. Because you have to realize as a board member, the limits that you have. Like I go in and visit schools, but I go in to support. I don't go in to say, well, you'd be doing that, you need to be doing that. That, that, that is not my job. I'm there to support. I'm there to support when the schools have um, programs. Uh, I I want to be there sitting in the back, necessarily have to be acknowledged. I just want to be there to uh, to be supportive. Um, I'm elected by the community, stakeholders, and I need to be accountable to them. If they come up to me and have a concern, uh, then then that's a concern for me. And if it's something that I'm not able to do, then I need to go to the superintendent or whomever. So uh, I I do think that sometimes we get on the board and, you know, we we forget that we were elected by the people and to help the the children of the people. So I think you have to make sure that you have that straight in your mind, what you're there for, who elected you, who you're really accountable to and for as well.
Okay, well, we are about ten minutes from close on this. Uh, and if we give you two minutes each for uh, closing statements, that will take us up to our time limit. So uh, with that said, uh, let's uh, let's go ahead and start with uh, Mr. Reagan. And uh, you have two minutes to give us your closing statement.
Uh, in my closing statements, I would ask for your vote because uh, first of all, I'm very knowledgeable of what it goes on in our district. As I stated before, I have had numerous of relatives and I still want to have relatives even after this. Uh, even though I'm not on the board, I'm still active in the school district. I still help out with harvesters. As I stated, I have uh, been interacting with the superintendent because your job is still not all over with. Uh, just because you're not on the board doesn't mean that you can't stop doing any things for our district. Uh, I look at each individual and I hope that all individuals that are on here that are running candidates, I hope that you guys get more involved in our school district. Uh, it would look good, uh, you know, that we all are uh, working together, even if we're not chosen. But I'm asking today, uh, just looking, uh, like I said, I'm very knowledgeable. Uh, I'm here for not only the teachers, the students, but I'm also here for the parents also. Uh, keep in mind, we're in a job to uh, uh, for education and helping out and supporting the superintendent as a board member. Uh, and as I stated before, board members are going to be held accountable uh, for the things and where your tax dollars are going. Uh, you need to be buried and not only that, to also, our job is to help the rest of the board members get up to part of where they need to go also. Uh, board members also have to hold the other board members accountable, whether it's in right, wrong or whatever, just because I know you. Uh, and it's a way of doing things as Mrs. Gray stated earlier. So uh, in closing, uh, I look forward to uh, April the sixth on Tuesday, uh, when it's time for you guys to vote. Uh, vote for Clifford Reagan the third for the Hickman Mills School District as director. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, Ms. Osby.
All righty. Uh, again, my name is Ms. Ebony Osby and I would like to thank first the um, the League of Women Voters for um, allowing me on this platform to voice my opinions about the topics that were um, opposed to me today. Um, a vote for me is a vote for the children, the children's future, um, your neighbor's children, your grandchildren, your great, great, great grandchildren. Um, I have nothing but passion for children. I have a passion for helping. Um, it's not even a vote for the children. It's a vote for our community. My slogan is a vote, uh, I'm, excuse me, my slogan is community starts within. I am within this district. There are resources within this district that I plan to dig out um, to help um, this school district strive and thrive to become the potential that it is. Um, I'm a mom first, um, and that's not just to my children, that's to all children in this district. Um, and so I just want this district to become its best for all of these children. They deserve a good education. Uh, we should not have to go out to public, to different charter schools. We shouldn't have to go to different districts um, to get the best education when the potential is right here down the street from us. Um, and I'm invested in this school district, again, not just for my kids, but for all kids. My children love this school district. This school district, like Ms. Gray said, um, it has the culture in it. We just need to bring it out. It has the community. Um, the heart of the community in it. We just need to bring that out. And so I, um, little on me think that I can help um, make that happen. If you would vote for me April sixth, um, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pearson.
Okay. Uh, thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. I am greatly appreciative. I will tell you that competence is my watchword and you can hold me accountable for that. A vote for me is someone that's going to look out for your children's educational needs through policy, through commitment. I'll strive to maintain technically and tactically proficient in terms of how we administer policy. I plan to look at policy, to review policy, to make sure that a policy fits the needs of the community, to not only look at it in a vacuum, but to look at it with our other board members and to make sure that we're moving as a unit. I plan to be a team player. I do not plan to divide, but I plan on standing on sound principle and using what God has given me for free. I do understand that this is an unpaid position. I'm retired. So the money is not of an interest and I don't have any political venue or anything other than making sure that our children get what it's need, what what's needed for them. So a vote for me is a vote for a guy that's going to have your community and your children's best interest at heart. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Coleman.
First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving me the opportunity to let you know who Ann Coleman is. I am passionate about education and the students of the Hickman Mills District. I am retired, so time I have to give to you. I will advocate and stand up for the children of the district who deserve the best education that we can give them. I will work with other board members as a team, never losing sight of our main priority, and that's the students of the Hickman Mills School District. I will strive to ensure that all students receive a quality education in a student-centered environment where they become lifelong learners and they will be socially prepared to excel in whatever direction they go after they graduate from the Hickman Mills School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Graves.
I'm Carol Graves and I've been an educator for over twenty-three years. I've uh, served as both president and vice president of the Hickman Mills School Board. I've been around for, this is my third term. Um, I have also served on the Hickman Mills Foundation. And so I have been involved all, in all aspects. Uh, I want to say that, you know, board work is 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 challenging. Um, it might look easy when we're sitting at the table and everybody's looking at us, but it's very hard work. And you know, you you have to, you have no idea until you actually get in to see the work that you have to do. But it's worth it when you have a passion and a desire to make a change. I have the desire. I have the determination and I'm dependable. I've been in every last one of the schools, whether it's at a program, whether it's visiting principals, just checking in. And I think that is so necessary. I have a love for kids. Uh, I have a love for my kids, my, that I, that I work with. And, you know, I just, I just have that passion. Uh, I I want to work with other board members. I I want to see Hickman Mills move up. I I I want to see the culture change. Uh, you know, years ago, my niece was a principal in at Irving. Uh, it was a middle school and they lived out here since nineteen seventy-seven. And people would say, uh, I I work at Hickman Mills. So now they say South Kansas City. I mean, it was really a big, it was really a big deal to say that. And so I I I want us to to get back what we've lost over, and yes, I think it's possible. I think when you have the right people in there, you can make the changes. And that's what it's all about. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for the opportunity. I thank the candidates. I've learned a lot uh, being in the forums with you and I wish everyone the best of luck. And thank you so much.
Thank you. So uh, thanks for everybody for participating and on behalf of the League of Women Voters and our partners, the South Kansas City Alliance, we really appreciate you joining us. Before the election, take a look at your ballot, which you can find on the League's homepage, L W B K C dot org, by clicking on Vote four one one and please vote on April the sixth. Again, thanks to all of our candidates and to all of you for joining us in Empowering Voters. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.